If school board members would please take their normal seats, our guests please seat themselves in the audience. Good evening and welcome to the swearing in ceremony for our newest school board member Karen Keys-Gamara. Performing the swearing in this evening will be Judge Bruce D. White. He is the chief judge of the Circuit Court of Fairfax County and also a distinguished adjunct professor of the law at the Antonin Scalia Law School of George Mason University and a graduate of Annandale High School. Excellent education. Karen Keys-Gamara was elected on August 28th as an at-large member. She will fill the at-large seat that was vacated by Ms. Huff who moved out of the area last spring. Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara represents the interest of many at-risk children as a court-appointed guardian at Leitem in Northern Virginia. She is an attorney. Most recently, she served as a member of the Fairfax County Planning Commission and has also been a member of the Schools and Parks Committee. Ms. Keys-Gamara is a graduate of Tulane University and the Washington University School of Law. Her professional experience as an attorney includes family law, consumer concerns, employment discrimination, union disputes, regulatory matters, and bankruptcy. A well-seasoned lawyer. So, to begin the process, I would like to call Ms. Keys-Gamara and Judge White to the podium for the official swearing in.
Are you ready to receive your oath?
I am.
Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Karen Keys-Gamara...
I, Karen Keys-Gamara...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge...
Discharge...
All of the duties...
All of the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the at-large member...
As the at-large member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. It's now official.
I would like to officially welcome Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara to be our colleague and member of the Fairfax County School Board. If my colleagues on the board would like to come, we will have an official picture taken today. And if Mayor Keys-Gamara's immediate family would like to join us as well to be included in the picture. Thank you. Thank you. The regular business meeting will begin at 7:00. Thank you. Karen, you can take it. Will board members please come to the table? Good evening. This September 14th, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the South County Middle School Saxophone Ensemble under the direction of Tracy McGuire. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, students. That was excellent. And thank you to the families who shared their wonderful musicians with us this evening. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on September 14th, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Was there a motion? Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? Evans, Palczek, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Schultz, Darrenet Kofax, abstentions, Wilson, Hines, and Keys-Gamara. Thank you. Before we begin, Mr. Moon and Mr. McElveen are absent this evening. They are out of the country on travel. Few announcements before we begin. First of all, I believe Ted Velkoff, former school board member-at-large, is here in the audience. Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Okay. If you would like to review a copy of the... Oh, wait. Do we have any other elected dignitaries? I saw Markeen... And Fairfax City. And, okay. John Buttram and Phyllis Pajarto. Yes, okay. We have any other elected officials? Marcus Simon was here and I think Markeen was also here. All right. Well, thank you all very much for coming.
And Planning Commissioner Julie Stranley is here as well.
Ah, thank you very much. We wouldn't want to overlook anybody important. Thank you. So, a few announcements. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select the School Board from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings website. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I will now call on Ms. Fittacanda for announcements.
Sorry about that. Hi, everyone. I hope the first three weeks have been going well for all of you. So, this month, we are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th, 2017. America's cultural diversity has always been a great strength of our nation. The Hispanic-American community has a long and important history of commitment to our nation's core values and the contributions of this community have helped make our country great. During the National Hispanic-American Heritage Month, we celebrate the many achievements of Hispanic-Americans and recognize their contributions to our country. This year's theme is "Shaping the Bright Future of America." In 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week, and this observance was expanded in 1988 to a month-long celebration to honor our nation's Hispanic heritage. During this month, America celebrates the traditions, ancestry, and unique experiences of those who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, the countries of Central and South America, and the Caribbean. Throughout our history, Hispanic-Americans have enriched the American way of life, and we recognize the millions of Hispanic-Americans whose love of family, hard work, and community have helped unite us as a people and sustain us as a nation. We are also celebrating the U.S. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day on September 17th, 2017. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day are observed each year on September 17th to commemorate the signing of the Constitution on September 17th, 1787, and recognize all who, by coming of age or by naturalization, have become citizens. Recent legislation has renamed the day as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day and urges proper observance of the day. This year, the official observance day is Sunday, September 17th, and is the 229th anniversary of the nation's founding document. In observance with Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, all schools in FCPS will be observing this day with activities that recognize the adoption of the U.S. Constitution and those who have become citizens under the Constitution. Schools will use a variety of curriculum resources to teach students about the importance of the Constitution and responsible citizenship. Throughout the service year, high school students will have an opportunity to participate in service learning projects related to responsible citizenship, which can lead to a civics seal on their diploma. And speaking of responsible citizenship, I would like to welcome Boy Scout Troop 1523 who are in attendance this evening. Would the troop please stand and be recognized? And that's it for announcements tonight.
Thank you very much. I will call on Ms. Evans for recognition. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The American Childhood Cancer Organization, or ACO, has designated September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to spotlight the types of cancer that largely affect children, survivorship issues, and to help raise funds for research and family support. According to ACO, 15,780 children under the age of 21 are diagnosed with cancer every year in the United States. Approximately a quarter of them will not survive the disease. A diagnosis turns the lives of an entire family upside down. ACO offers support, information, and advocacy through their community of families, survivors, and friends affected by childhood and adolescent cancer. They are dedicated to improving the lives of children and families living with childhood cancer and engaged in this life-altering struggle. FCPS students who are being treated for childhood cancer participate in homebound instruction while they are undergoing treatment or recuperating. We are joined tonight by some of our FCPS family who have been personally impacted by childhood cancer. Longtime teacher Jake Cokely retired from FCPS after 30 years of teaching physical education and returned to FCPS as a part-time elementary physical education teacher at Woodburn Elementary School. It was at Woodburn where John met a little girl named Ellie, who had been diagnosed with childhood cancer. It was at Woodburn where John met a little girl named Ellie, who had been diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic leukemia in the spring of 2013. By the time she entered kindergarten that fall, Ellie had lost most of her hair and was wearing hats to school every day. Jay noticed her affinity for fun and cheery hats and organized a hat drive to provide Ellie with a broader selection of hats, and Ellie's Hats was born. Now, thanks to the hard work of individuals who, like Jay, took an interest in Ellie and her hats, thousands of kids across the country who are battling cancer have received new hats and so much more. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to encourage everyone to visit the website for Ellie's Hats at ellieshats.org and the American Childhood Cancer Organization at aco.org to learn how you can help. At this time, I would like to invite Jay Cokely, Ellie and her mother, Jenica Whitfield, to join the Board at the dais for a photo. Thank you.
I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a recognition.
In 1979, President Jimmy Carter officially proclaimed the first Sunday after Labor Day each year as National Grandparents' Day. This year, September 10th marks the 38th year anniversary of National Grandparents' Day. This special day was created with the purpose of honoring grandparents and to help children recognize the strength, wisdom, and resilience that can be learned from older generations. Grandparents' Day is a way for the whole family to spend time together by volunteering together. Grand Involve received the Outstanding Community Organization Award at the Governor's Voluntarism and Community Service Award Ceremony this past summer. Grand Involve began in 2014 when a group of 16 volunteers met and began a pilot program in Crestwood Elementary School involving grandparents in volunteering in the school. Grand Involve has taken this very important concept of building up our communities by involving grandparents in the lives of younger people and have implemented this model in a number of Fairfax County public schools throughout the school year. Grand Involve has grown to become 108 volunteers, serving at six schools, with 3,016 hours of classroom service just this past year. Currently, Grand Involve is planning the expansion into all Title I schools in the Mount Vernon District during the 2017-2018 school year. Grand Involve serves as an exemplary model of volunteers working together for the betterment of our Fairfax County Public Schools community. They have taken the initiative of building intergenerational relationships in our school communities and will continue to make a significant positive impact on our students. On behalf of the Board, I would like to recognize the tremendous efforts of Grand Involve and encourage grandparents in the audience to consider joining Grand Involve this year. At this time, I would like to invite Dorothy Keenan and all the representatives from Grand Involve in the audience to join the Board for a photo at the dais.
Now, it is my pleasure to read a recognition of Dr. Ricardo Sockwell. And Dr. Sockwell, I'm going to ask you to stand and at least come to the front so that people can all enjoy your wonderful visage as we say thank you to you. We would like to take a moment this evening to recognize one of our valued employees who is retiring with almost 20 years of experience with FCPS, Dr. Ricardo Sockwell. When Ricardo first arrived in FCPS 18 years ago, he brought the concept of accountability and strategic targets to the School Division. His impact started with drafting the original 10 targets to streamline division-level instructional focus. These later evolved into the three student achievement goals, and more recently into the instructional goals in IGNITE. In each case, the legacy of Ricardo's original vision for target reporting, that is publicly reporting on evidence for set metrics and making judgments about whether we are making progress, has been continued. Ricardo also impacted the way FCPS conceptualizes its management of programs and budgeting for programs. He pioneered the concept of an identified program manager for each program, who would be officially responsible for providing guidance about each FCPS program and the use of resources allocated to the program. Implementation of the Program Manager concept by the School Division then allowed FCPS to develop a program budget document that captured the funding for and the use of funds for each program. For the first time, program budgets were developed by financial services and directly linked to the program manager. The Program Manager concept was further solidified when the Office of Program Evaluation took on the task of developing the School Board's suggestion to create a system to evaluate all programs. The outcome of this request was the institution of the Quality Programs Assurance System, QPASS, developed by Ricardo and his office. QPASS had several levels that gave responsibilities for both Ricardo's office for the evaluation of programs, as well as to program managers for documenting and reviewing their programs in relation to set goals. The Transparency Project with the county linking to FCPS program evaluations and program profiles would not exist if it were not for his work. Ricardo was also the genesis of FCPS adoption of Demming's Plan Due Study Act cycles of continuous improvement over a decade ago. PDSA has been adopted by FCPS schools as a way to improve instruction and continues on, as well at the division level, and FCPS's current approach to decision-making. The list of other tools, surveys, and processes that Ricardo developed himself or made better through influence is too long to mention in its entirety, but includes: SAG Performance Bands, a survey to track the development of PLCs in our schools; a taxonomy of different stakeholders to data evidence questions; a set of research-based standards for professional development; and a process for systematic selection of teacher-leader grant recipients. The impact of the myriad tools, surveys, and processes will continue on in their present or evolve form for many years to come. His legacy includes an office staff with individuals who have always been pushed to think beyond the surface of the work to what would be the most impactful in moving the division toward improvement that was best for students. He always provided whatever level of support was needed to ensure office product exceeded expectations and always gave the credit for the final product to staff, not himself. Ricardo will forever be the one and only director of the Office of Program Evaluation, and the reason its name was appropriately changed to the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement. The new name represents the broader and strategic impact he always brought to any task his office took on and may represent the most long-lasting legacy of his tireless work over two decades to help FCPS think and act more strategically. We wish Dr. Sockwell and his family all the best in his retirement and thank him for his years of dedication to the students and staff of Fairfax County Public Schools. And at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Sockwell, his guest, and all the rest of us to join us in a picture. And, Dr. Sockwell, you took us to the next level and the next chapter that we needed to go to for accountability and strategic planning, and we are very grateful. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Sockwell, if you would like to share a few comments.
Thank you very much. To the Board, the Superintendent, and the other administrators, I just want to express my appreciation for the opportunity given to me over the past 19 years to serve in Fairfax County Public Schools and the community. I especially appreciate the willingness and courage of the administration and the School Board to ask very difficult questions that many School Divisions simply would not have asked. I also appreciate the confidence that was given to my staff and me to help you answer some of these very difficult questions. Sometimes our answers were partial. Sometimes they were unpopular. Sometimes they were too technical, but they were always in the spirit of supporting the Division's best decisions. Along the way, I met the most committed, knowledgeable, and good people that one could ever imagine meeting. Some of these folks are here tonight, and I thank you for coming out. I also thank you for helping to shape my own personal growth as an educator. I owe a special thanks to my wife Denise, who is also here, who is also in public service with the Health Department, for constantly reminding me during my most stressful moments that I did not come to Fairfax just for a job. I came to try to make a difference, and I hope that I have done that. I hope that the Division will continue to rely on a very committed and talented Office of Research and Strategic Improvement to help guide the important decisions as the Board pursues the promises in its strategic plan. And lastly, once a member of the Fairfax County Public Schools community, always a member. So, I will be looking for opportunities to continue to support the School Division, but not full-time. So, again, thank you for this recognition this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you again, Dr. Sockwell. The next item is citizen participation. Tonight, we have 10 citizens who signed up to address the Board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age limits. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. The first speaker is Mary Matheson, to be followed by Ruby Nactio, to be followed by Allison Munchy.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Mary Matheson, and I'm an English teacher at West Potomac High School and a parent in the same community. I wanted to speak to you this evening because of the discrimination that I've witnessed against transgender students by teachers, and even worse, administrators.
against transgender students by teachers and even worse administrators. While FCPS has a clear non-discrimination policy that includes gender identity, there is not a specific set of regulations, so there isn't any direction for how to move forward in eliminating discrimination. So what should I have done when an administrator wondered out loud why kids just can't use the right bathroom? To whom should I have gone to ensure that comment didn't come out of a closed office and into the hallway for kids to hear? And how should I have addressed the PE teacher who refused to use a requested pronoun and then publicly complained about the request? What should my answer have been when that PE teacher told me that I personally was making their job more difficult because I did honor the request? Language and society are changing, sometimes faster than even I can keep up with, but I do my best because I've seen how difficult it is for a young human being to feel marginalized and disrespected because of something that was biologically determined. I admit that I didn't understand how being transgender works, so I did my research. The magazine Scientific American says that a host of factors figure into whether someone is female or male or somewhere in between. Humans are socially conditioned to view gender as a binary attribute. From before we're born, we are definitively labeled as boy or girl, yet science points to a much more ambiguous reality. Dr. Milton Diamond of the University of Hawaii studies transgender issues in identical twins. He concludes that yes, there is a clear indication of genetic likelihood that identical twins will both be transgender. And Catherine Wu at Harvard University says that transgender identity has long been associated with poor mental health, but prompted by studies separating the mental and physical health problems experienced by transgender people, the New York Times reports that the World Health Organization, among others, is moving to declassify transgender identity as a mental disorder. More and more, science is proving beyond a doubt that gender identity is almost entirely genetic and that the psychological component is a result of an adversarial environment, often outside the family structures, like in school. Science can only give us the factual information. What we do with it is up to us. Witnessing direct and overt discrimination by the adults in the building forced me to evaluate and inform my own thinking and then behavior. But since we don't have a clear set of regulations that will encourage, maybe even demand, that the adults in the building do adjust their thinking, discrimination will continue. I left a copy of the articles that I referenced with that beautiful blonde lady over there.[771.51][771.51](laughing) Thank you.[774.94][774.94](applause) The next speaker is Ruby Naktio, to be followed by Allison Munchy.
Okay, "Family Life Education, Otherwise Known as Sex Education Leads the Young to Become Sexually Active, Which Can Lead to Depression and Suicide." An article posted on Beyond Today states, "Teenage Sex Linked With Serious Depression", and I quote, "A survey sponsored by the National Institute of Child Health and Human Development, along with seventeen other U.S. federal agencies, has revealed a startling link between teenage sexual activity and depression and suicide. The study revealed that a quarter of teen girls who said they were sexually active also said they had been depressed a lot of the time or most of the time. In contrast, most who refrained from sexual activity were never or rarely depressed. Researchers concluded that sexually active teens are far more likely to be depressed than those who hold off until marriage. Three million of the nineteen million Americans afflicted by mental depression are teenagers." Commenting on the study, Dr. Meg Meeker, a physician for adolescents, tells us that this is no surprise because teens are targets of a loose culture promoting promiscuity and excess. Dr. Meeker goes on to declare that, "When you look at sexual activity in teens and you add up the losses they endure, they have lost their virginity, they have lost their self-respect, they have lost a sense of control over their body, they have a sense of shame. The national campaign to prevent teen pregnancy are sexually active teens if they regretted early sexual activity. Results show that three-quarters of girls wished they had delayed sex, and a majority of boys and girls regarded their first sexual experiences as something they would have preferred to avoid. Regret, dissatisfaction and guilt, together with the losses previously mentioned, leave teens vulnerable to serious mental depression. But what does depression among our young sometimes lead them to do? The answer is heartbreaking because prolonged mental depression can easily lead to suicide. Just in the past decade, the rate of teenage suicide has risen 200 percent. Researchers also found that fourteen percent of girls who had had sexual intercourse had attempted suicide, almost triple the percentage of sexually inactive girls. Among boys, the differences were even greater, with six percent of sexually active boys having attempted suicide compared to only one percent of sexually inactive boys. This kind of link is too profound to ignore. Parents, teachers and public figures desperately need to set our youth a better example in self-respect and personal discipline. In conclusion, I recommend parents opt their children out of family life education to protect the risk of their children from becoming sexually active, which can lead to depression and suicide. For more details, please see ConcernedParentandEducators.org and ParentAndChild.org for more details of the shocking and offensive material in FALI. So parents, look and decide for yourself. Thank you."
The next speaker is Allison Munchy, to be followed by Tina Williams.
I've been told several times that it's our stories that change minds, so with my daughter's permission, I will tell you hers. She's eleven years old and transgender. She's not a threat to anyone's safety, she's not confused or mentally ill, and trust me, she's not allowed to be whatever she wants to be. She must be kind and helpful. She must be a respectful and responsible student and member of society. But accepting that she is a girl has been the easiest part of parenting for my husband and me. As a matter of fact, being transgender is the least interesting thing about her, I promise. She's creative, funny, talented, obsessed with American Girl dolls, and brave. She's so, so brave. My daughter is happy and healthy. As her mom and as a proud teacher here in FCPS, I'm committed to helping to create a future where all kids are accepted and supported, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. While I believe there are so many more important issues we should be talking about, I know that for some, when they do not feel protected and supported, these issues mean everything and their lives are at risk. When we talk about suicide, we all know that the best prevention is support from home and school. When we feel supported and accepted, we are far less likely to want to commit suicide, and this is a truth we can't ignore. I'm not asking you to understand what it's like to be transgender or gender non-conforming. I've come to realize that none of us can understand it unless it is who we are. It's not necessary to understand, only to support our brave students who are. They aren't asking to be treated differently or with any special care. They are only asking for the same protection and support that we give all students. We can't risk leaving it up to the leadership of individual schools. While my daughter has been incredibly supported at her school before, during and after her transition, I speak not just for her, but for all transgender and gender non-conforming students who may not be as fortunate and need protections that enumerated regulations would provide. There are many districts throughout the country that have successfully implemented similar policies. We can and should look to them for guidance. Our kids are counting on us, and for them, and of course for my daughter, I'll keep telling our story. Their lives are depending on it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tina Williams, to be followed by Kevin Hickerson.
Good evening, school board members, Chairwoman Strauss and Dr. Brabran. I'm Tina Williams, a school counselor and president of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers Local 2401. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my members. Effective management and allocating funds to directly support high-quality education in our schools is necessary. Research by the Commonwealth Institute revealed that over the past eight years, FCPS enrollment increased 11 percent, or eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine students. Fewer staff are in our schools, nine hundred and thirty-six less relative to student enrollment in '08-'09. While state direct aid per student has increased only 9.8 percent for FCPS, shares on funding for school operations has declined. These factors have a significant impact in the classroom on a daily basis for teachers as well as our students. Some of the impacts are: fewer teachers in larger class sizes, recruitment and retention challenges as a result of underfunding salaries over time, students' support staff and services have decreased due to staffing cuts, facilities and buildings are declining with issues such as leaks, molding and deterioration. Impacts just mentioned result in teacher concerns such as: less support staff and students and teachers impacts student behavior and increases discipline issues, less staff results in heavier workloads, more stress, more duties and responsibilities, less unencumbered planning time, and even lower staff morale. Larger classes without support produces harmful effects on student learning outcomes and performance. An answer to overcrowding is deteriorating trailer communities where students and teachers feel detached from their school communities and uncared for. Non-competitive salaries keep our county behind in the job market and behind as a viable location to work and reside as teachers. We can all agree that a high-quality education is crucial in preparing our students for their future. I believe that we also can agree that our excellent teachers make it happen. Supporting our teachers equates to supporting the future for children in this county. Working together with Dr. Brabran, along with that concept in mind, we can fully fund our schools. Harmful cutbacks from 2009 on have caught up with FCPS. For far too long, educators shouldered attacks on their pensions, foregone step increases, while getting more work, larger class sizes, more responsibility and all the blame. It's time to invest in our schools by directly allocating funds that support our educators.[1357.41][1357.41](applause)
Thank you. The next speaker is Kevin Hickerson, to be followed by Nasal Masood.
Good evening, Chairman Strauss, fellow school board members, Superintendent Brabran, and FCPS staff. My name is Kevin Hickerson, and I'm president of the Fairfax Education Association. It's good to see you all again. And the FBA looks forward to working with you as the school year progresses. Tonight, I speak on the strategic goal number four, resource stewardship. FCPS is the heart and soul of this county. Our community expects us to, with what they give us, with the utmost care and due diligence. Anything less would be irresponsible, but we must be wary of cutting too much in the wrong areas. So far, instruction has been mostly protected via reductions to support staff, but there's only so far those types of decisions will take us before undermining the internal foundation that is necessary to keep instruction top-notch. To be good stewards of our resources, we must ask whether we are programmatically being effective as possible, and if new programs are not effective, we need to have better mechanisms for shifting resources. Are we foisting upon our employees top-down programs that may or may not work when we could be organically growing our very own ideas from the talented people you have hired? Perhaps before embarking on new initiatives, we need to pause, take a breath, and take a good, hard look at our internal resources and the returns on the programs we already have. Your educators are thirsting to use all of their skill sets to educate their children. It could be argued that the professional autonomy can be just as important as salary in the discussion of employee retention. Return on investment sounds great in theory, but it also needs to have the surrounding context to be an effective tool. For example, cost per pupil may show efficiency, but does it show efficacy? With close to 200 work sites, are we holistically looking at programs or are we digging in and seeing if schools are utilizing the resources given to them as effectively as possible? I am hoping that the decision to cycle created for resource allocation delves deeper into these questions. It is an understatement to say that it is important conversation to have with all the stakeholders of FCPS. Buried underneath the cold, hard, unforgiving numbers of FCPS's bottom line lies the heart of 200,000 people that are directly affected by the decisions based on allocating those numbers. With that in mind, we should be considering a solution that is already being implemented across the country from Oakland, California to Cincinnati, Ohio to New York City: community schools. Community schools offer a way for FCPS to be able to take local communities into account about how they see their schools interacting with them. It takes the county resources and FCPS resources and combines them, not only for efficiency, but effectiveness. The great thing is, there is not one correct way to do a community school. There are countless examples of how community schools can be implemented. Herndon's needs could be different from Annandale's. Shantilly's different from Mount Vernon. The point is that the innovation you are looking for doesn't have to come only from gatehouse, but from the very communities you serve. Thank you.[1558.41][1558.41](applause)
Thank you. The next speaker is Nasal Masood, to be followed by Debbie Ratliff.
Hello. I would like to talk to you about the name change for my former high school, J.B. Stewart. The key to any good business, as many people here might know, is good branding. You have to have a name that represents what your business is about. And I know that running a school like a business is a terrible idea, but in this one case, the idea makes sense. We want a name that represents the school. The school I grew up in was a diverse community, full of all sorts of loving people, and as also a side note, for the people here supporting trans students, I can say I would not be alive here today if it weren't for the support of my fellow peers at Stewart High School of both my ethnicity, race and sexuality. So please also keep that in mind. I would like to ask you to rename the school Barbara Johns High School. That is a name the students have chosen. I'm sure you've probably already heard about Barbara Johns, there's a campaign going on, but her fight to desegregate right here in Virginia is what the students need. They need someone who can inspire them because they are ready to work. They are ready to make the world a better place. They are ready to go off to college and succeed in ways that we can't imagine. But that effort is being undercut by people on the outside demanding that we keep a monument to a Confederate general. That makes no sense to the students, but the students are also being told that their humanity, the students of color in particular, are being told that their humanity doesn't matter compared to how much money a name change costs, and are being fed lies like the fact that it would cost a million dollars. That's like ordering a $50 burger. That just doesn't make sense. And I would like the school board to keep in mind the students' wishes. Keep in mind that they were, at the meeting last Saturday, they were the most mature ones in the room. The people demanding to keep a Stewart name didn't really have that much to do with the students, and in fact, you know, I was talking to my sister, who is a current student there. They're kind of terrified of the frankly older adults who are showing immaturity and projecting their own feelings on an issue that doesn't matter. And I've heard the argument that words are just words. As a writer, that makes no sense, and we need to teach children that. If children are saying that, that means we need to invest more in their education in English. And also, keep in mind that that argument has been, were used to defend bigotry, and we need to teach them that is not right. Words matter. Barbara Johns High School. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Debbie Ratliff to be followed by John Murray.
Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts tonight. The school board will consider the actions of other school systems across the country as you decide on the new name for Stewart High School for the strategic plan goal four, which states that benchmarking processes will weigh organizational operations against other school systems. The majority of school renaming's across the country are very similar to ours, based on removing Confederate names from schools, and the majority of the new names in these other school systems are in honor of people whose life's work advocates for the greater good, for public education, students, diversity, and inclusion, and people who is, have also reasonable connections to the state and the community as a means to both heal and inspire. I'm here to explain that the new name of Stewart High School should be Barbara Rose Johns High School, or Thurgood Marshall High School, or Louis Mendez High School, to be consistent with the decisions of other school systems and adhere to our own policy. Each name has the healing potential to stand for racial and cultural inclusion, the genesis of the name change consideration, which will have immediate significance both in our community and our country, inspiring broad outside philanthropic support to help pay for name change costs. All three of these names stand for the rights of students of all colors and all backgrounds, as one speaker noted last Saturday, Hispanic, Jewish, Muslim, African-American, Native American, and so on. Any one of these names of these individuals will always reflect our student body, no matter what its demographic makeup is because of the far-reaching impact of their life's work that touches us all. Justice Thurgood Marshall, civil rights giant, Supreme Court justice, community member; Barbara Rose Johns, student civil rights leader from Virginia who bravely helped change the law and integrate public schools; Colonel Louis Mendez, World War II hero, Stewart High School parent, and the first director of the National Right to Read Program. FCPS would actually go against what other school systems have done if we were to rename our school after a person who happens to have the last name Stewart but doesn't have any connection to public education, diversity, or inclusion. And naming the school Stewart with no connection to an individual at all also goes against what other school systems have done and FCPS practices. Given the recent events in Charlottesville, in fact, any name associated with the Confederacy, including Stewart, should not be an option for us. Additionally, and perhaps overlooked because it's self-evident, the school is already known in print and digitally as Stewart High School. The suggestion Stewart High School as a name change therefore is not a name change. FCPS regulation states that school names should be consistent with other school names at the same level. Since many FCPS high schools are named after people, naming Stewart High School after one of these three people will be consistent. In fact, seventy-four percent of the names nominated by our community last weekend are in honor of people, so the community agrees. Honoring a person is the way to go. The regulation asks us to avoid but does not prohibit names that might be similar to other schools. So if the selected name is Justice Thurgood Marshall High School, the school board could decide that the school will be called Justice High School. To wrap up, one more sentence. As I've explained, the inspirational names Barbara Rose Johns High School, Justice Thurgood Marshall High School, and Louis Mendez High School are consistent with new school names and other school systems across the country, they adhere to FCPS policy, and each name has the healing potential to stand for racial and cultural inclusion, the genesis of the name change consideration, which will have immediate significance both in our community and our country. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Murray to be followed by Joe Pichota.
Good evening. John Murray with ParentAndChild.org. Let's say you're the parent of a fourteen-year-old who's suffering from one of the serious setback of adolescent life, maybe academic failure, failed relationship, personal turmoil, whatever the situation. Your child is in a state of emotional distress. So one day, your highly-stressed child walks into eighth-grade health class and reads the following. "Each ugly phrase deepens my resolve and makes my decision easier. The latest posting on the school website has a picture of me hanging from a noose. The animated image swings back and forth so peacefully. I think I'm ready, ready to escape. It's not like I really want to die. What I want is to stop hurting. What I want is to end the pain. My life is nothing but a lie anyway. I'm ugly and stupid, and I deserve to die. Today is my birthday, and I'm fifteen. I'm not even sure why I'm still alive. I've been writing suicide plans for over a year. Guess I'm too chicken to go through with it. I should have just killed myself when I first thought about it. I'm a worthless dog. Get it over with already." Each of these excerpts is from the eighth-grade health as taught in Fairfax County Public Schools. Now, this is your fourteen-year-old, or a friend's fourteen-year-old, or a neighbor's fourteen-year-old currently in the throes of a personal crisis, a crisis of the same magnitude as the account I just read, an account that makes a powerful case for doing the unthinkable. Will your child in despair be moved by those words of despair? Will your child in despair find that solution enticing? Now putting those words in context, the storyline is about a girl who was relentlessly bullied in school and the searing pain that results. It makes a powerful case about the evils of bullying. It also makes a powerful case for doing the unthinkable. I ask you to think about the effect of such words on an emotionally troubled student. "I'm ugly and stupid, I deserve to die, I've been writing suicide plans for over a year, I should have just killed myself when I first thought about..." Whatever those words may accomplish in deterring bullying could also encourage an emotionally overwrought student to do the unthinkable. This is health class. You can't opt out. A parent whose child is emotionally troubled has no option. Their child will read or hear those words. Do you want any troubled child exposed to those words? Please take a look at eighth-grade health and see if you can find a better alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Pichota to be followed by Christopher Burns.
It's Pichota. Dr. Brabran and school board members, thank you. My name is Joe Pichota. I'm a resident of Lake Barcraft Community and serving Jeb Stewart High School. As you know, the school board has wasted two years and spent thousands of dollars of precious school resources and has proposed committing up to somewheres of seven hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars in a name change for Jeb Stewart. That's a, that is overwhelming majority of the students and alumni and community do not support because there's just not a compelling need. The name change takes away the needed academic resources, not improving them. The real issue for many of the name keepers is not the changing of the name, but the lies, the deceit, and the lack of trust and integrity in the renaming process. With, with all due respect to comments posted previously, the Freedom of Information Act documents obtained by the Taxpayer Protection Alliance tells a different story, a true story. The original text by, by texting of some of the school board members and the collusion with the NAACP as well as other persons about origins of the Jeb Stewart High School name change. Taxpayers, voters, students, alumni, and constituents are entitled to know the facts behind the issue because they will ultimately pay, not only for the financial cost of what happens at Jeb Stewart, but also enduring the psychological harm impacted by the name change movement. As it finds its way across the county for the renaming of other targeted schools in Fairfax County, Lee, Woodson, and even Thomas Jefferson will not be safe from the history burners, the righteous ones. There is no stewardship in the strategic plan without common sense, physical discipline, July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, the school board work session had the Fairfax County Public Schools staff put together and estimate the cost of the name change, which would be four hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand dollars for the name change. Four hundred thousand dollars is the cost that it would take away from just, just having Jeb Stewart taken away and renaming the school Stewart. Evan stated in her motion that in the spirit of compromise and in the recognition of the need to minimize cost as a desired continuity by alumni staff, she, she requested that the staff select Stewart and consider Stewart as, as a new name. Also, it is supported by Chairman James Strauss and at large Ryan Evelyn. Other names would put the cost much higher. Thank you very much.
The next speaker, the last speaker is Christopher Burns.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Burn. I'm a resident of Fairfax County and a taxpayer here in the county. I'm not here to talk about the merits of a name change. I'm here to talk about an allocation of resources issue which each of you must face every day. And that brings us to the Fairfax County Money Tree, which you all are very well aware I don't see a glimmer of recognition, and I think that's because there is no money tree in Fairfax County. And I think you all know that very well. I think you all know that every day you have a limited budget that you have to deal with. Some of you are more akin to budget than others, believe in it more than others, but the fact is that your budget is limited. You don't have a money tree. So what does that mean for Fairfax County, for those schools who are having accreditation When you're making money choices and you don't have a money tree, and you have to look at the student who is going to an unaccredited school, what are you going to tell them? "I've taken the money away from your education quality because there's this other pressing issue over here, like a name change." Is that what you're going to tell them? Because they only go to school once. They only have one shot at it. And when you're allocating money, you have to look at those students in the eye, and you have to say, "I have discharged my duty to the greatest extent possible for the quality of your education." I'm not saying that a name change is unimportant, but you have to assess where on the ladder of possible sources of spending the money, can it be best spent for the student's education? How can you look at teachers who take money out of their own pockets and tell them, "I'm not making money and resources available to you because I think it's a higher priority to change the name of a school." Again, I'm not denying the obvious issue that has been brought to you with regard to the name of a, of a school, but I'm asking you to think twice because these kids have one shot at it, and you have a limited budget, and the taxpayers are not a money tree. So you have to make some tough choices. Please, keep that in mind when you're allocating your budget because you know you're not operating at a surplus. Thank you.
Thank you to all those who came out to speak to us this evening. Our next item is Student Representative Matters, and I will call on Ms. Fetaconda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As many of you know, September is Suicide Prevention Month, and as we reflect on some of the losses we've had as a community this past year, I urge all of you to consider suicide prevention and mental health support policy as quite possibly the most important thing any of us will ever work on. It's our job as a school system to make sure every student who is hurting has a safe place to talk to an adult and receive help for whatever they may be going through, and it's our job to eliminate toxic environments in school that harm students' mental health. It's also our job that, to make sure that we stop treating mental health disorders with stigma. Our students have to be able to talk about whatever they're going through without fear of being judged. And part of our mental health efforts has to start in reducing student stress, which is a precursor to some of the more serious mental conditions, mental health conditions we've seen in our community. In such a high-pressure academic environment like Fairfax County, we see more and more of our students suffering from anxiety and depression over the intense workload created by schoolwork, extracurricular activities, jobs, family obligations, and more. Believe me, I know what it feels like to go home after a long school day and extracurricular activities, only to face what seems like an impossible amount of, of work to do. And I know that many of my peers feel this overwhelmed or even more on a daily basis and end up feeling defeated, exhausted, and miserable when they could feel excited about learning. And as a school district, we need to understand that academic and personal success doesn't and should never come at the expense of students' mental health, and we need every stakeholder on board with this. We need to create grading and homework policies that promote project-based learning while preventing students from being overwhelmed by schoolwork. Students should be able to self-advocate when their workloads are too extensive, like when they have a few exams on one day. It's always possible for them to make one up in advance or to distribute it so that they're not up until four AM studying for a math test and feel like it's going to be an impossible task. And we need to listen to them. We need to be there for them. And we need to stop the notion that a few bad grades will derail a student's success and a student's future will be over if they fail a math quiz. We need to instead be focusing on how to help students learn to recover from these kinds of failures, which is, in my opinion, a much more important lesson than any of them will probably ever learn in the classroom. But beyond alleviating student stress, we need to make sure that any students in need of more structured mental health resources have a vast array to choose from. We need to work with counselors, school psychologists, and social workers to make students, to help students understand that there's a team that can support them at school and beyond, and they don't have to feel ashamed or worried about coming forward to a trusted adult. And more importantly, we have to look to the students to guide our work on what we're doing with supporting mental health. Students have driven many of the changes at, especially at the high school level regarding mental health. Like in some of our schools, we have Mental Wellness Week where we discuss what, how our diet and physical exercise can help us maintain our mental wellness, and we also discuss awareness of some of the more serious issues that are going on in our own schools, like depression and eating disorders, and we learn how to identify if one of our friends or peers is suffering so we can tell a trusted adult. And one initiative at some local high schools, including my own, at my school it's called TJ Minds Matter, we have peer counselors who help students with non-emergent problems. Our peer counselors are all certified in youth mental health first aid and work with students who are struggling. They can just talk to them over Facebook or Instagram or whatever they want and just work with the students to help them feel like they're not alone, and they're able to refer them to more immediate resources like the National Suicide Hotline and trusted adults if necessary. But most importantly, I implore all of you, both on the board and in the audience, to realize the impact your words and actions have on those around you. We've seen the negative impact bullying has on students who are seen different from their peers. Believe me, I grew up in a school where I was the only one who looked like I did, and trust me, it wasn't really fun to feel that different. And I implore all of you to take the time to stand up for your peers and even someone you don't really know. No one deserves to feel uncomfortable or threatened at their school or in their communities because of who they are. While some of our students who are suffering from mental health conditions may need specialized help that we all can't give them, never doubt that your kind words and actions have a significant impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fetaconda. Our next item, our next item on the agenda is four point zero three, the strategic plan goal four, resource stewardship. And I do remind my colleagues that we will have a work session coming up at which time there will be the opportunity to ask many questions and for prolonged conversation, whereas this evening, this is a presentation for, for new business, and I will call on Dr. Brabran first for introduction.
Thank you Chairman Strauss. The goal for resource stewardship presentation is a cross-departmental collaboration involving many of our staff members. Its purpose is to show that Fairfax County Public Schools is using its resources with fiscal responsibility and with transparency. Before I turn it over to Kristin Michael, the Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, who's going to lead the team presentation, I want to remind this board that in July, I talked about the one-pager, trying to really distill for you and for our community the essential elements of the presentations that were bringing to you. I had been in the job maybe just a week or two, but we've had the recess and you will be seeing moving forward, all of our presentations will still have narrative and the additional reporting detail that you've come to see in the past, but we'll be presenting here at the board meeting the essential elements on a one-pager that really gets to the crux of the issue and tries to identify the key issues or decisions that need to be made by this board. I hope you find that feedback helpful, and I look forward to getting your feedback on this approach so that we can communicate more effectively with each other and with the community on issues of public concern around our school system. So without further ado, it's my pleasure to have Kristin Michael come up and begin the presentation.
Thank you so much. To begin the presentation tonight, I would first like to start with a video that features my colleagues in action supporting resource stewardship. that features my colleagues in action supporting resource stewardship. On behalf of my colleagues on the leadership team, thank you for the opportunity this evening to present The Strategic Plan Goal Four Resource Stewardship. As Dr. Braybrand indicated, tonight I'm thrilled to be making brief remarks using our new one-page summary format. Then at the work session on Monday, September 18th, my colleagues and I will present key information from the slide presentation that is posted, and will also be able to answer any questions that the board has regarding the presentation and/or the full report that's also posted. So for Goal Four, we have two overarching strategies. Strategy 10 is to maximize and align our resources to be accountable and transparent with the community regarding the resources that are entrusted to FCPS. Strategy 11 is to promote the values and benefits of the community's investment in FCPS in order to increase the community's understanding of the division's operating and capital needs in order to support student success. So when we look at the Goal Four report, the majority of the information is really reflecting back. And we've worked to not duplicate any information that was presented in the other Goal Four reports. So tonight I'm beginning to cover the key points as shown on our one-page summary. And the first, which is critical, is our cost per pupil. And that's shown under the summary background section in the top-left graphic. So the cost of educating a pupil really reflects the efficiency of our instructional delivery across the system. Cost per pupil calculations provide an overall view of the cost of all programs, and it can be used to compare how school systems across the region spend their funding. So with an FY '17 cost per pupil of $14,432, FCPS is ranked in the middle of the school systems in this metropolitan area. So our cost per pupil has consistently remained in the middle of the region. But if we compare ourselves to our closest competitor in terms of size, demographics, and also with similar student achievement, Montgomery County, if we were spending the same amount per pupil as Montgomery County, our budget for FY '17 would have been $289 million higher. When we look historically over time at our cost per pupil, from 2009 to 2017, our cost per pupil increased by $1,092. That's 8.2%. But if we adjust for inflation, in FY '17, we're actually spending less per pupil than we were in 2009. So when we look at how our per pupil expenditures impact the region as part of Goal Four, a report prepared by George Mason University Center for Regional Analysis that was presented to the board earlier this year showed that FCPS is the largest employer in the county, and that we contribute $2.2 billion to the Fairfax County economy, and we're one of the most important sources of local economic activity. The report's author, Dr. Stephen Fuller, found that FCPS accounts for 4.1% of countywide employment base, and our budgeted spending accounts for 2% of our gross county product, making us the second-largest source of economic activity in the county following the federal government. This report demonstrated that FCPS provides a significant economic benefit to the community. So the funding provided to FCPS by our local and state partners has a positive impact that goes well beyond the classroom. When we look at the chart on the top right, this is a new chart that we haven't previously shared with the board. But we think it shows a clear graphic representation of our focus on instruction and how we've tried to protect our instructional program during these last economic years. So the chart shows in the bar on the left, student enrollment. That's the green bar. Our student enrollment increased 14.7% during this period. That's an increase of 24,179 students. That's nearly as many students as Arlington County has in total. At the same time, the bar in the middle is our school-based positions, and they've increased 9.1%. So that growth in school-based positions is due to the fact that we use formulas to allocate positions to schools based on student enrollment. If we hadn't made budget reductions, you would expect to see that growth being similar with our growth in students. But with the impact of budget reductions, we see an increase of 9.1%. Then in the bar on the far right, with a focus on protecting the classroom, you can see that our non-school-based positions during this same time period decreased by 10.1%, or 176 positions. So while we have 24,000 more students, who use more technology, who have more square footage, and while we're serving an additional 1,855 school-based positions, our non-school-based positions decreased by 10%. So as we all know, through challenging economic times, developing a budget that meets our educational needs of our students, the expectations of our community, the needs of our employees, while having limited revenue and increasing expenditures, has required strict adherence to our strategic plan and our priorities through maximizing our limited resources. Funding the instructional program has always been our highest priority. And with budget reductions during this period that have totaled over half a billion dollars, we've made every possible effort to ensure that we're directing our resources towards the classroom. So when we look at this page, the information below this line is really forward-looking information. And you're going to hear a lot more about this on Monday from our experts. So if you remember, in last year's Goal Four report, we included a description of the initial development of return on investment. That framework has been developed by Lidi Haruda, who's leading our new Office of Research and Strategic Improvement. And she's going to help share more information about this on Monday. So last year, we talked about ROI was really in the early stage along that pathway to the development of a decision-making framework. Since last year, ORC has taken the lead in developing that initial stage of the decision-making framework. So as you can see in the graphic on the right, they started with a framework of Plan, Do, Study, Act, which many of you know was originally developed by Deming, which was to focus on a series of systematic steps to decide how you improve a process, or in the case of our strategic framework, for how we can allocate funds and resources to best support our success of our strategic goals and actions. Through a series of meetings, the leadership team has actually begun to use this plan to develop our strategic prioritized streamlined plan to help us look at our programs, services, projects, and initiatives, and to identify and rank those that have the greatest potential of impacting our strategic plan. Ultimately, after multiple years of work, the strategic decision-making framework is intended to be used at multiple levels within the school division, for example, by our leadership team, our departments, our schools, and offices. So in conclusion, efficient organizational stewardship is more critical than ever in terms of achieving our academic excellence and the strategic initiatives of our division. As the Goal Four report shows, and in the video you saw tonight, the need to demonstrate resource stewardship spans all of our departments and FCPS. And responsible stewardship must be understood and exhibited at all levels of FCPS in order to generate and preserve the necessary resources for our organizational success. Again, I'd like to conclude by thanking my fellow leadership team members and the staff in all of their departments, whose efforts truly do promote resource stewardship, and our commitment to accountability, open communication, and transparency. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Michael. And again, I remind my colleagues, we will have an opportunity for in-depth discussion. I will entertain any clarifying questions you have. If not, we will proceed. Any clarifying questions? No. Thank you very much. The one-pager was very much appreciated, Dr. Braybrand and Ms. Michael. Thank you. The next item is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. For the first motion, I will call on Ms. Schultz.
I move to excuse from attendance at school a certain student identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1254B1.
Second, by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Thank you. All those in favor? That is Evans, Palchak, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Schultz, Darrenak Kofax. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Wilson, McLaughlin, Keys-Gamarra. Thank you. And away from... Okay, yes. Thank you. Ms. Heinz is away from the table. Thank you. For the next item, I will call in Ms. Evans for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with a serious criminal offense related to an alleged community-based incident and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Darrenak Kofax. All those in favor? Evans, Darrenak Kofax, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Darrenak Kofax? Did I do that? Palchak. Yes. I'm sorry. Yes. Those opposed? Or abstention? Schultz, Wilson, Keys-Gamarra is abstaining. Yes. Thank you. And McLaughlin? Did I catch everybody? Mr. Wilson, are you abstaining? Yes. Thank you very much. I didn't see all the hands. For the next matter, I will call on Ms. Evans.
I move to grant, in part, the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened to harm staff and students at school and to modify the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second? Second. Second by Ms. Schultz. Thank you. All those in favor? That is Evans, Wilson, Palchak, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Schultz. Those opposed? Abstention? Mr. Wilson, are you abstaining? Because I don't see your hand.
You voted yes.
You did. Okay. Thank you, because I couldn't see. Thank you. McLaughlin, and Darrenak Kofax, and Keys-Gamarra. Did I get everybody? Yes. Thank you very much. All right. The next item, 5.02, is modification of a contract, and I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I move that the school board approve the modification of Sprint Turf's contract to include performance of additional site work involving the stabilization of the subgrade of the field at Sandberg Middle School in return for payment of the additional amount of $412,290. And upon receipt of such funds from the Park Authority, hereby authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the modified contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, really, Ms. Darrenak Kofax. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank the facility's staff for the excellent work that they have done on this issue. This has been a very stressful issue for the Fort Hunt community because of the inavailability of a turf field, the only turf field that they had available to the Fort Hunt Youth Athletics for the fall season because of additional work that needed to be done on the field. I also want to thank the Parks Authority, who has already transferred the funds over to Fairfax County Public Schools so that this work can be done expeditiously. So to make it clear, we are not allocating additional funds. These funds come from the Fairfax County Park Authority, and the work on this field is being done at the behest of the Park Authority, but by our subcontractors. That is why we are having to do this contract here.
Thank you. Ms. Darrenak Kofax, would you like to add anything?
I have nothing to add.
Great. Thank you for the explanation as well. All those in favor? I'm sorry, Ms. Schultz. I'm sorry. I did not... There you are. Thank you very much.
So I do have a question. I don't know if Mr. Plattenberg is the appropriate individual to address this. In the world of construction, building, contracting, with which I have a lot of familiarity, one would hope that everything always goes neatly and smoothly, and there's no additional work, and no problems, and no delays, and the weather cooperates. What happens, just on the off-chance that that doesn't happen, and it isn't $412,290, and there are delays, or there are problems? Are there any anticipated difficulties with the schedule, with hitting asbestos in the dirt, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, thank you, Ms. Schultz, for asking that question. But absolutely, whenever you have unforeseen conditions that you discover, it's kind of an evolutionary process out in the field. And usually, generally, you have a plan for certain contingencies during the process. In this case, we had done soil samples and done some test pits to anticipate that we're within industry standards to identify any unsuitable soils. But it was so, and the area of being so low-lying in that region, it was so infiltrated and saturated that it was well beyond what was the original estimate. But it's sort of like, you know, preparing for a wedding or the first day of school. No matter what, the kids are coming. So we've got to get this field back up and going, and we certainly appreciate all the support you've given us.
So what will happen if we run into, if they run into drainage issues, weather issues, installation issues? I mean, are we on the hook as a school system to make up anything beyond that? Is this a firm fixed-price contract? Is it a time and materials contract? I mean, I don't know the particulars of this contract. So is it $412,290, no matter what?
Yes, ma'am. This was just for this individual change order. We do have the internal controls in place, which is the reason why we're bringing it here. It is, in fact, as was stated, a contract that we're facilitating for the Park Authority on their behalf. And as I said, this contract was pretty much, it was competitively bid. We've got the pricing. We were going ahead with the work. And we discovered a situation on the field. We anticipate this is the last. The reason why we're bringing it to you this evening is because time is of the essence, not only for the use of the children that have been displaced, but also for the community as a whole. We're trying to get it done as quickly as we possibly can.
And as a parent of students who are regularly using turf fields, I definitely appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we're immunized against any cost overruns. I mean, it's great that the Park Authority is paying for this. What I don't want to do is get to the end of this, and all of a sudden, somebody's bringing us a bill that's come due for a "oh, by the way." I don't want any "oh, by the way."
No, ma'am. That's not going to happen. This is part of the partnership between the schools and the Park Authority. So thank you very much.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Plattenberg, if I just could ask another follow-up question. Since it sounds like maybe there was some unexpected site circumstances that are requiring the additional funds, is it anticipated, as the contractor assured us, that this is a final fix and that we won't be coming back to repair the field again 18 months from now, or something like that?
Yes, sir. That's the plan.
I'm sorry.
I said, "Yes, sir. That's the plan."
Do they provide any warranty?
On unsuitable soils, it's based upon the measurement and the anticipated. It's done by, it's basically third-party verified of the actual quantities that are displaced, removed, and then re-implaced to make it so it's a stable condition for the field that we're putting in. This isn't the first time. This is a partnership, but this isn't the first time that we've ever discovered unsuitable soils on any of the multi-billion-dollar projects that we've had over the years. Our process of remediation and corrective action, because of our experience, is something that the Park Authority is benefiting from.
Thank you for the answer. I'm just not sure I totally understand. I guess what I'm concerned about is that we put the money into this, you know, with some expectation that we've got a fix, that we're not going to have to refix. Again, since there is a location issue, what is, do we have an expected lifespan, then, of this fix for the use of the field?
Absolutely. The approach of this is definitely engineered by our civil engineers. So they took into account, especially this region. As you know, Sandberg Middle School is our school, and the property is our property. This just happens to be their field that they pay for on our property. And when it was constructed initially, the technology was a little bit different back then. And when we go to replace it and we find the saturation, we're making sure, like we've done at other, West Springfield High School is another perfect example. When we went back and did the replacement of that... we went back and did the replacement of that, we built up the underlayment of that and built up the filtration elements because they're much more advanced for the artificial turf nowadays.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
I hate to shoot a dead horse. Is there a clause in the contract that determines if there is additional cost, who will pay it?
Without having the contract right here in front of me, what I will say, it's a very good question. In our contracting, we always have individual statements within that. Our partnership with the Park Authority on this whole deal was, we would go ahead and bid this project and they would pay for it. We would also administer it because we've done, over the past couple of years, over seven or eight different artificial turf projects. In fact, Kevin Snee, the Director of Design and Construction, has come up with the most cost-effective way of getting artificial turf fields done as a part of the longer or larger extended Joint Turf Task Force project that's gone on throughout the county both with the county and the schools project. So, within each of our contracts, we have a very, very solid and very grounded history. I'll be happy to continue the conversation about our contracts offline and have legal counsel also there. We do use school board legal counsel to review our contracts, and it's a very sound, sound process. But again, I'd be happy to meet with anybody and talk further in greater detail about each of our individual contracts.
Okay. Seeing no other requests for information or discussion, we'll come to a vote on this item. All those in favor? Evans, Wilson, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Hines, Schultz, Darrenet Kofax. Those opposed? Who are abstaining? Ms. Keys-Gamara. And Ms. McLaughlin is away from the table. Thank you. As is Ms. Palchek. Thank you. Okay. Our next item of business is consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01. Approve the minutes of the July 27, 2017, regular school board meeting. 2.02. Appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03. Approve the revisions to the Strategic Governance Manual as detailed in the attachment on the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01. Award the contract for the rooftop air handling unit replacement at Chantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.02. Approve the strategic plan goal four, resource stewardship report as detailed in the agenda item. 7.03. Award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Flint Hill Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.04. Award a contract for the portable classroom trailer purchase to the most responsive and responsible offer and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.05. Approve the suicide prevention risk assessment post-vention policy as detailed in the agenda item. 7.06. Appoint individuals to serve a one-year term on the challenge materials interdepartmental review committee as detailed in the agenda item. 7.07. Adopt the newly revised 2017 Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution previously adopted by the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions detailed in the agenda item. Superintendent matters, Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. First of all, I'd like to welcome Karen Keys-Gamara to the school board. I look forward to working with you. As you know, I'm new too. It's my rookie year. So, welcome, and I'm sure we're going to have an exciting time and a productive time together. So, thank you for being here, and I look forward to working with you. I want to thank our financial services team. We've already talked a little bit about finances and resources tonight. They have received, Fairfax County Public Schools has, on behalf of their work, a meritorious budget award for excellence in the preparation and issuance of the FY 2018 budget from the Association of School Business Officials International. They were also given an achievement and excellence in procurement award for their outstanding practices. I want to congratulate Kristin Michael and her team for being one of only nine school districts in Virginia and one of only 26 districts in the entire country to receive that designation. So, congratulations to her and her team. I think a round of applause is in order for that. The Virginia Technology and Engineering Educators Association has recognized Thoreau Middle School with its Program of the Year for its Education Technology Program. We're doing a lot more with technology in our schools, and it's great to see one of our schools getting acknowledged that way. They also recognize Braddock Elementary School teacher Joyce Matthews as the Virginia Elementary Technology Education Teacher of the Year. So, Ms. Matthews is just doing an outstanding job at Braddock Elementary, and it's great to see her work being recognized. Finally, look at the time. And it may not be going where you think it is. This is the first year we've not scheduled back-to-school nights on school board meetings so that we could start meetings on time and hopefully end on time. And I want to thank, frankly, all the principals who've worked hard to make that happen. You know, I was a principal, of course, in the school system, trying to get the right date to balance principals and athletics and activities and just community events. It's a hard thing to do and also create the opportunity for school board members to really get a chance to be out at these events and be in the community. So, thanks for everybody for doing that, and thank you very much, Chairman Strauss.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next, our board reports, and I'll call on Ms. Darrenet Kofax for a report on governance.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The governance committee met yesterday for the first time this year, September 13. At that point, staff shared the status of their review of Policy 8335 on wireless communication facilities, and an additional update will be presented to the governance board at our October 11 meeting on this topic. And Dr. Braybrand, he shared his agenda for the September 25 school board retreat, and I think it's going to be a great retreat for all of us. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenet Kofax. Board matters. Begin with Ms. Evans.
I just want to say, welcome back to school, everybody. I've enjoyed going to the back-to-school nights and meeting with principals and getting back in the swing of things. And beyond that, I just wanted to give a warm welcome to our new colleague, Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara. We very much look forward to working with you. Welcome.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just echo Ms. Evans' comments. Welcome back to the schools and welcome back to the school year. Parents, as always, you are the most important educator of your child, so please stay involved. And to all the students out there, I hope you have a very good and productive school year. And I also would like to congratulate and welcome Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara to the board, and I look forward to working with you.
Ms. Palchek?
Yes, I will also echo the thoughts welcoming everyone back to school. I, myself, have returned to teaching full-time, as has Ms. Hines, so it's been a special back-to-school this year. I also want to welcome and congratulate Ms. Keys-Gamara for joining us on this board. We are all very lucky to have her. And also want to echo thoughts of staying engaged in your school, especially if you're not sure how or haven't before. Maybe think about this year, an intention of trying to find a new activity or a way to get involved. And finally, I want to thank our wonderful student rep for recognizing so many things happening, and especially for Hispanic National Heritage Month. It is an honor to represent our community here. We're a fourth of our kids, one out of four, are Hispanic or Latino. So, I hope you take the time to learn a little bit more about the great diversity within the Hispanic community in Fairfax County, and I want to wish everyone a safe, happy, and wonderful new year, and thank Dr. Braybrand and his staff for a really excellent start to the year. Very, very calm. We haven't heard much, so that's a great thing. Thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I would like to echo my colleagues' warm welcome to our newest colleague, Ms. Keys-Gamara. It is a pleasure to serve with you. I was able to serve with you on the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission, so I know that this group will benefit greatly from your participation on the board. I would also like to send out a very special thank you to all of the teachers, staff, administrators, and principals that have made the opening of this school year such a delightful start of the year. I have heard parents and students excited about learning, and the warm embrace of our caring culture this year is definitely being felt in the community, so I thank you for that. But I also want to thank the facilities staff because they had a shorter summer than expected, and in the Region Three, we have a significant number of schools being renovated, and they went through some Herculean efforts to get those schools open and ready for students. So, thank you very much for that. And last of all, I want to wish the class of 1967 from Mount Vernon High School a wonderful reunion this weekend. They will be first meeting at Mount Vernon High School where they will be doing a service project in getting, cleaning up around the stadium, and they will follow up that activity with a photograph in their original Mount Vernon High School on Route One. And so, I am just wishing them a wonderful Saturday filled with events.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes, I have a couple of thanks. In particular, I want to thank the transportation staff. I feel like I have to go back and watch my opening notes, but I feel like every year I say, "This is smoother than last year." And I want to say, almost without exception, this is the smoothest start to a school year in terms of transportation. The one community that really did struggle, my West Springfield High School community, had an immediate response. I mean, just an absolute immediate response and a solution from the transportation staff. So, I'm not sure what's going on over there, but what you are doing is working so well that we're not seeing any problems. It's just, it's an amazing thing. And I look back to, you know, in six years on the board, sort of this chaotic start to the school year, and everybody sort of braced for those first couple of weeks, and it just keeps getting better. So, any parents that are having difficulty in school communities that are having difficulty, certainly let us know. But I really do want to thank the people that are behind the scenes a little bit. We saw, this is a video I actually liked. Ms. Michael, Ms. Michael, that was for you, where you see the people behind the scenes that are making things happen. So, that was phenomenal. I do have, I do want to acknowledge that I have a couple of administrators in some schools, particularly elementary schools, who have some very sick children this year. And the difficulty in staffing and managing and providing for the needs of the families, the children, and I mean truly very, very ill children. You see not only the heart for academics and the academic success for children, but for the whole child. And I want to thank them because when I get to deal as a board member with some of these very complex and difficult issues, you see how much goes into serving and meeting the needs of individual students, individual families, in individual school communities. And this is something that I don't think you necessarily sign up for when you become an educator or an education administrator in a building. And so, thank you. I know that's hard, you know, to handle the emotional needs also of your staff who are dealing and trying to meet and have a more successful academic experience for very ill children. I do want to welcome Ms. Keys-Gamara. I don't know if you know what you've signed up for. You're about to find out for Mr. Toad's Wild Ride. But welcome to all my families, and please feel free to contact me. But most importantly, the one thing I would like to emphasize, because I don't think we do enough, and I want to get a PSA out there, Dr. Braybrand, for your regional offices. I don't think parents, I don't think families understand that we have these five amazing regions that are almost anywhere else in the country. That's a superintendent. That's a superintendent for about 25 or 30 schools at least in our individual regions. And that's the first place that if you can't work out an issue with an individual teacher, an individual building administrator, a principal, the next place that you go is your region assistant superintendent or your region executive principal. And I look forward to working with Dr. Braybrand to sort of elevate that role and advertise the ability for our families to connect with their regions more over this coming year. Thank you.
Ms. Darrenet Kofax?
I too want to welcome back all of the students and teachers, administrators. Also thanking Dr. Braybrand, his staff, for a smooth opening. It is not easy to get all of our students in, and I have received zero complaints about the start of school, and that is... I know, raise your hand. You deserve it. And your team behind you as well. So, thank you all for your hard work and your caring and getting our children safely, starting a week earlier this year. And so, we had a little less, 10 less working days for you to get it all done. So, thank you so much. And another welcome to you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. I have had the opportunity to work with you over the last few years in various capacities, and I am thrilled to have you as my seat partner and thrilled to be working with you. So, welcome, and I know you're going to be a great asset to our group here. Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Well, I'm happy to be here, and I feel quite welcomed by everyone. So, I'm looking forward to getting an opportunity to work with Dr. Braybrand and our wonderful staff, and my children have all attended Fairfax County Public Schools. So, I'm just looking forward to really joining hands with my colleagues and seeing what we can do. Thank you so much.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. To my colleagues, I stepped away from the table because the Boy Scout troop that was here this evening is from my district, and they are working on their citizenship badge, and I wanted to give them an opportunity to ask a few questions from tonight's meeting. And the issue they chose was the Stewart High School renaming. So, it was very interesting to spend a little time out there with them about their impressions. And so, just really bright young men and wonderful to see them committed to that. I too just wanted to add my quick welcome back to our Braddock District families that have children in their schools and to the teachers and school administrators for a very smooth start. I had very few emails contacting me about any challenges they had in that beginning. And to Mr. Plattenberg, our assistant superintendent of Transportation and Facilities, I especially want to thank you. It really was such a smooth opening to schools, and that is a Herculean effort to not only get the buildings ready, but then to get those bus routes going, and just a remarkable job. So, thank you to you and your team. Dr. Braybrand, I also wanted to just say that I really appreciate everyone on your leadership team who's helped us with the opening of schools. Any emails that I've sent, I feel staff's been very supportive in answering questions that have come from my district, and so that's been appreciated. And then, as a parent, I went to my very last back-to-school night. So, that was very bittersweet as my youngest son is now a senior at Woodson High School. And I've been a parent at Woodson for over eight years now. So, just there alone, and an FCPS parent now, this is my 17th year. So, it's really wonderful when you go to a back-to-school night like I did. So it's, it's really wonderful when you go to a back-to-school night like I did and met all seven of his teachers, and I left the evening thinking, can I just go back to school with him? The teachers were amazing, and I want to give a shout-out to Mrs. Carol, who teaches AP Environmental Science. She teaches it in such a way that I came out of her 10 minutes of that back-to-school speech saying, every student in Fairfax County needs to take this class before they leave. It is cross-curricular, and if we are truly wanting to raise global citizens before they leave Fairfax County, I am telling you, that class and the way this teacher delivers it was fascinating. I'll, I'll send a detailed email to my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand about it. But as you can tell, I left that back-to-school night really excited for my son and very proud to be a part of this, this excellent school division. And so I hope everyone has a great school year, and as Ms. Schultz said, we hope you will work with the people in your school building to help you address any issues, but do know that this board, in collaboration with our amazing administration, will do our very best to create the caring culture that you deserve and you, you want us to help deliver.
Thank you. And again, I echo all the thank yous to our staff and our teachers and our principals and everybody that have made the opening of schools so smooth. And again, our facilities and our transportation people, who in the end just have incredible tasks to get us up and going. I also have to say, Dr. Braybrand, that when we've, community has asked questions, staff has been very responsive and very quick. And I know that our parents truly appreciate that. In some cases, they've been long and involved answers, but they've come rapidly. So I thank everybody for that. I would like to share some interesting news. Many of our schools and communities have projects whereby they collect food, help to redistribute to food banks or to, we know, we have children and families who, who don't have enough to eat. I went to an event in Reston-Herndon, a brand-new way of organizing food collection, and this is masterful. It is called Hunger is Closer Than You Think. They have a website, www.FoodForNeighbors.org. Anybody who is active in collecting food and redistributing it, I recommend that you take a look at this. This was organized by some folks out of Herndon Middle School, and www.FoodForNeighbors.org. It is a new, high-tech way of organizing, spreading out volunteers. It is a great system. So anybody out there, because I know lots of schools are involved in this, this is a great way to do it, very efficient. So highly recommended. Right, with that, the board will be returning to closed session. So the board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to protect the privacy of individuals and personnel matters not related to the public business pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A4. And three, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia, specifically personnel matters. And next, discuss and consider personnel matters specifically the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, discipline, or resignation of a specific public officer and specific public employee pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion? Move by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? That is unanimous with Ms. Hines away from the board. The board is now in closed session. Thank you all very much.